Okay, we're good to go, Lynn. You can go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. It's June 2, 2025. This is... This is the first of two meetings with the Town Council this evening, and it is a public forum on capital improvement program. It will be followed by a regular meeting of the Town Council. Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 extended through June 30, 2027, the ability of public bodies to meet in a fully remote or hybrid manner. This law allows us to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the council physically present at a meeting location. This meeting is accessible in real time by Zoom, by phone, and as a live broadcast on Amherst Media Channel 9. There are not... There are actually 10 councillors in the room this evening. Please be advised that this meeting is being held in person and that the remote access option is provided as a courtesy only. In the event of technology issues with the remote connection, the meeting will continue in person as scheduled, such that members of the public are encouraged to attend the meeting at its physical location if possible. Given that we have a forum of the council present, I'm calling the June 2 Public Forum on the Proposed Capital Improvement Program to order at 6:32. I'll call upon each councillor by the name they have indicated they would like to be addressed. At that time, please unmute your mic, stay present, and then remember to mute your mic again. Patty Angeles.
Present.
Ana Devlin-Gothier is absent. Councillor Ette?
Present.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Councillor Hanke?
Present.
Bob Hegner?
Present.
Councillor Lord?
Present.
Pam Rooney? Councillor Ryan?
I'm here.
Kathy Shane?
Here.
Andy Steinberg?
Present.
Jennifer Taub?
Here.
And Councillor Walker? Still... Okay. Kathy Shane, please call the Finance Committee meeting to order.
Okay, I will be repeating names because the councillors who are on the Finance Committee have already answered, but I will call on each of you. Councillor Hanke?
Present.
Andy Steinberg?
Present.
Bob Hegner?
Present.
And Alicia Walker is not here yet. We have two resident members, and both of them said they would not be able to make it tonight. So the Finance Committee is called to order.
Thank you. There's no chatroom for this meeting. If councillors have technical issues, please let Athena and me know. And please use the raised hand button. There is no change in the order of the agenda for the public forum. This is a public comment. There is one public comment period during this public forum. It is strictly with regard to the capital improvement program. There will be a general public comment during the next meeting, which begins immediately after this meeting and on the same Zoom link. So Paul, did you have any particular presentation you want to make with regard to the capital improvement program?
Sure, I have a very brief presentation. So this is... This public forum is requiring... requirement of the Town Charter, which requires the presentation be no longer than the public comment period. So we will be brief because this is a... This is a topic that's been discussed by the council and the Finance Committee multiple times and the Joint Capital Planning Committee. So next slide. So the capital improvement program shows a $9.66 million capital allocation under our different... for various departments, which are shown on this slide. Next slide. The... Some of the highlights that we want to talk about is our investment in public safety. One of the big things is the public safety radio system replacement. That's a borrowing. That's an authorization. It won't show up in the actual capital expenditures for FY '26, most likely in FY '27 or FY '28. You will notice that there are a couple appropriations for ambulance that comes out of the ambulance fund, which is... Are the fees that are collected when we transport patients. We collect fees through the insurance for those patients, and then we buy the new ambulance and the cardiac monitors. Schools, you'll see, have some allocated for the sixth grade relocation, some electric school buses at lease program, and also special education vans, which are much needed. And then the facilities and infrastructure have a significant investment. This is for our built... Our buildings that need a lot of work on them. Traffic calming initiatives. We initially had $50,000, I think, with the... After JCPC, it went up to $100,000 in some other... And the roads, obviously. That... That $775,000 is what the town is putting in. We also get about $850,000 from the state. Next slide. So and then we also look forward for five years. We had to reduce our commitment to capital this year in order to accommodate some of our budget challenges. We would like to get that up to 10.5% because the capital needs of the town are only growing. And you'll hear... You could hear about that. You've already seen some correspondence on that as well. We have inflation and aging infrastructure, which is really driving many of our costs. You will notice that not many vehicles, other than the schools and for the ambulance, are on this capital plan. Those are deferred expenditures. We thought there were other higher priorities than new vehicles this year. And then we are also looking at additional grants from the state and major borrowings for our large buildings. So going forward, we have a lot of challenges. It's going to require... Demand us to prioritize our needs and balance what we're able to allocate for the capital versus what we are able to allocate for our operating expenses. And those are very strong competing needs. Both are needed. Some hard decisions will be made... Have to be made. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We're going... Kathy?
I'd like to make a couple remarks building on Paul's before we open it up.
Please.
Okay, I just... You've just heard from Paul, the core elements. I just wanted to make a few observations as Chair of Finance, and I was also Chair of the Joint Capital Planning Committee. The proposed plan follows all the recommendations of JCPC, including an increase of $100,000 from $350,000 to $450,000 for the sixth grade move, and this was requested by the schools. In addition, the proposed plan includes all the requests the town received from schools, elementary and regional. They are all on the list. If you look at the next four years, which Paul didn't mention, it's part of the plan, none of them are balanced. In fact, they're quite a bit out of balance. So we will have tough decisions to make.
Thank you. Mike, it is now 6:38, and the floor is open for public comment. This is only in regard to the capital improvement program. So if you are in the audience or on Zoom, please make sure that if you're in the audience in the town room, that you've signed up. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand at this time. Athena? Do we have anybody for public comment?
Vince O'Connor.
Vince O'Connor, please come forward. State your name and where you live. We will keep the time period to three minutes. Okay? Is it the light on? It's green. Got it. Thank you.
So I just have three brief comments about the capital budget. I want to again comment about the really awful condition of the sidewalk in front of the shelters on Thiele... On the first block of Thiele Street. Just think that it's not a... Hopefully a huge project, but it is for people who live in that shelter. It is really an unwelcome... It's an unwelcoming experience that shouldn't be there. And I would just urge that Public Works put that on its list for this summer. I have been helping people who live there. Their children attend local preschool. And it is just really an insult to the people who live there to leave that street and sidewalk in the condition it is. The second comment is that I have been driving on Bay Road, both on West Bay Road and Bay Road itself, or considered in the last month or so. And I would hope that, perhaps I heard misheard, that that West Bay Road would be the priority rather than Bay Road. Bay Road seems, although there are many of these little strips of caulked and so forth, West Bay Road is in deplorable condition. And if you drive more than 20 miles an hour, you risk your car. So it's really important that West Bay Road be done. And that also we focus on some of the local streets that are in equally dreadful condition, although they don't have the traffic. Some of those streets are simply unsafe for children or adults to bicycle on. And they cannot be left in the condition that they are in. Finally, in terms of energy saving, I would just ask that the council consider as a priority assisting the regional school district in paving the high school parking lot, which is a necessary precursor to the plans that have already been developed to install solar panels on that very large parking lot that would help reduce the energy consumption of the high school building. So if you would be willing to put that on your list and think about how it could be fit in or so point, I think it would... I think conserving energy is an important thing, and that that work has to be done in order for the panels to be installed.
Thank you for your comments, Vince. Are there... Is there anybody on Zoom or in the audience? Athena?
Marge or Krista, did you want to speak to the capital improvement program? Yes?
This is for capital improvement only. General public comment will be in the next meeting. Please come forward. I need to have you come forward to the mic. I'm sorry.
Would you please come up and speak into the microphone?
And it... And is this with regard to the capital improvement program?
Okay.
If it's not...
Yeah, I have to start out by saying that I'm not hearing a lot of what's being said. That's partially me.
Okay.
Maybe partially the system. So I didn't hear what Vince had to say, but I'm here in support of our concerns about the, you know, the ICE and what happened a few days ago.
The opportunity to speak to that will be during the next meeting, which immediately follows this meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So just let me know when it's the right time.
Absolutely.
I just couldn't hear well enough.
Thank you for being here. Okay.
And Krista, I put on the closed captions. Krista?
Hi.
The closed captions are now up on the screen.
Yes, much better.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other people with public comment? I think we're complete.
Councillor Hanke has a hand up?
I'm sorry, go ahead, councillor.
I was just going to move to adjourn the public forum.
Okay. Well, before we do that, I need to ask Finance to move. So why don't we... Kathy, go ahead.
I'm moving to adjourn.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee. That's what I'm just trying to...
I'll second.
Need to put it to a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Hanke?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
And Kathy Shane is an aye. It's unanimous with one councillor missing.
Okay. I move to adjourn the public forum and seek a second.
Second.
Thank you. Pat DeAngelis? No, aye. Yes.
Yes.
Councillor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Councillor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Councillor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Councillor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Councillor Walker? Okay. 11 people have confirmed that is the end of the public forum on capital improvement. We'll move now to the full council meeting, and it's still June 2. And all of the same things that I said earlier, hold. There are now 10 councillors in the room and one councillor on Zoom. I've already taken the role, so I'm not going to use the time for that. Let me just mention, there's one later addition added to the agenda this afternoon, and that is a proclamation recognizing our high school women's track team. And the other is that there will be one general public comment period during this time. Okay. Just a few announcements. We have council meetings coming up on the 16th and the 30th. Those both will be at 6:30. CRC is meeting on June 12 and the 26th at 3 on Thursdays. Finance is meeting this Tuesday at 2 o'clock. All of those meetings are on Zoom. GOL is meeting on... At 6:30 on June 10 and the 24th. And TSO is meeting on the June 26th and July 3 at 10. Andy, you seem to have another meeting coming up, right?
Yes, we have a meeting this Wednesday.
This Thursday?
Uh, Thursday. I'm sorry, the 5th.
Thursday, June 5? Thank you.
10 a.m.
At 10. Thank you. Please also mark your calendars. We have the Human Rights Commission and the Youth Hero Awards, which also celebrates Race Amateur Day. That begins on Sunday, June 8 at 11:00 at Mill River. On Sunday, on June 18, Wednesday, we're doing the Jones Library renovation and expansion ceremonial groundbreaking. And on the 16th, the Monday before that, before our council meeting that night, we will be doing the groundbreaking for the track and field at the high school. There's a pride parade on June 22, and we'll deal with July when we get to it. I also do want to recognize that Sue Adet, our longtime member of our clerk town... Clerk the Town Council's office and also clerk of the Town Council, is retiring later this week. She is known to all of the Town Council... I'm sorry?
Town clerk.
I'm sorry, the town clerk. Thank you. She is known to all of us as the Town Clerk and many of us of our residents for whom she has performed marriage ceremonies, assisted with obtaining passports, and overseen numerous elections. There's no hearing tonight. Now we will move to the general public comment. Okay? So anyone wishing to speak to general public comment, please make sure you have signed up with Athena if you are in the room. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand at this time if you would like to make general public comment. Athena, how many people have signed up?
Three.
Did you sign up?
Yes, Marge.
Hold on, please. Hold on. You'll get called. Okay. Athena, how many people?
Three.
Three. Okay. Public comments are a matter within the jurisdiction of the Town Council. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during general public comment. Public comments are not reflective of the opinions of the Town Council. Please call the first person.
Marge Levinson?
Please make sure the light is on. State your name and where you live, and also speak into the mic.
Apologize if you haven't done this in a long time, guys. So thank you. Hi, my name's Marge Levinson. I live at 326 North Pleasant Street, downtown Amherst. Well, thank you. Last Wednesday, U.S. Immigration, Customs and Enforcement Agents, better known as ICE, detained two Amherst residents who are still unaccounted for. As a member of the Rapid Response Network and a citizen of Amherst, I would like to request the Town Council, Director Town Manager, and/or the Chief of Police to call the Loose Hotline, which is a Massachusetts Immigrants Response Network for immigrant communities, allies, and anyone witnessing suspected ICE, DHS, or federal enforcement activity. Loose focuses on ongoing grassroots justice and equality for marginal communities. The Rapid Response Network, of which I'm a member, in turn decimates that information within our communities. So please help the Rapid Response Network do our job. The phone number is 617-370-5023. The Loose Hotline should be called whenever you determine ICE is present in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us.
Vince O'Connor?
Vince O'Connor, 175 Summer Street, apartment 12. There is a middle ground between being an accomplice to evil and standing by while evil is being done and not intervening. We've all heard the ads that encourage us to say or do something about violence against women, and hopefully, we have taken those ads to heart. We are now faced with the evil of ICE's profound abuse of its authority. The question before us is, how can we jointly work together to create an educated, trained police department that can appropriately respond to legitimate 911 calls about ICE's various forms of illegal activity? The first step is to acknowledge that there is need for that training and education. And that, I think, would inc... So I would encourage the council, through whatever committee is appropriate, to hear from experts on the field, to get informed opinion about what it is that police departments can do, and to develop a training program, not next year, in next year's budget, but this summer, to educate, inform, and empower the police department to answer 911 calls about ICE's excessive activities. If we don't do that, we will have a police force where citizens call in and say they're breaking down the door of my neighbor's house, or they've taken my niece and are taking her away, and I know she is a citizen. We need to have a way for people who are trained, armed, and so forth, to confront people who are also trained and armed. We should not be doing this ourselves. We should not have neighbors doing it. We shouldn't have... We definitely shouldn't allow the situation that is happening in this country to descend into either submission or vigilantism. The... The middle course between that is to have an educated, empowered police force that will appropriately intervene and protect citizens from the excesses of ICE conduct. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Vince.
Krista Osterling-Rozing?
Hi, yes, I'm Krista, as you know. So I'm here in support of both Vince and... I'm sorry, I forget the name of the...
Margie.
Mar... Margie. Yeah, I'm here in support of what they have to say, but also I wanted to mention a couple things I saw. I saw online that Worcester Police... And I know Amherst Police wouldn't do this, but that Worcester Police were actively assisting ICE by taking the daughter of someone that ICE was detaining away in like fiber... You saw the video. I don't know if you saw it, but they were like... Six Worcester Police were like holding onto her and like knocked her to the ground. I didn't... I don't remember, and I'm not sure exactly what happened, but I think they knocked her down, and she was screaming. And I want to make sure nothing like that happens here. I honestly think... I told a friend of mine who's a lawyer, who lives in Amherst part-time now, but is in Fairbanks as a professor, and she's been teaching constitutional law. She's very much in demand now. And I told her that if it were up to me, I would stop them and say, "I'm making a citizen's arrest. This is illegal in Massachusetts. You can't do it." And I did see another thing online of someone saying that in New York's... I don't know if it was New York City, I think. A lot of people... There were some ICE who were attempting to detain someone, and onlookers linked arms and prevented them from doing it. And that's what I personally would like to do. My friend said that in a situation like what happened in Worcester, if you attempted to do a citizen's arrest, you could end up getting arrested yourself. But if the police are doing something illegal, something has to be done. On the other hand, I also wanted to say that in Amherst, I know that being a police officer here in particular is especially stressful, both because of the population and also because an awful lot of demands are made of the police. I know that there was one police officer in Amherst who committed suicide. I'm not sure how many years ago it was, five, 10 years ago, maybe. I know this because I, you know, had a situation in my own circle of someone who had said something along those lines. And when I talked to the police here, he said telling someone is important because they had recently had a police officer here commit suicide. And I know a lot of police officers here have left for lower-paying jobs elsewhere because it is very stressful to be a police officer in Amherst. So what I'm saying about that is... Also, I know someone who retired early and said that he felt that his son had been threatened by, you know, someone who was an immigrant. All of this is to say that I think we need some... We need some input from the police officers, from the captain. I'm not sure who it is now. Is it Ting or is it someone else? I know he was acting captain for a while. And he was wonderful when my family had a need. But I just... I want to do this, but also be supportive of the police because I know that it's very stressful to be a police officer anywhere right now, but particularly in Amherst.
We need you to ramp up.
They're under a lot of stress. And I want... I want some feedback from them and support for them. You know, we're asking them to do something that's... It's a very stressful situation. And we're asking them to, you know, have a role, and that's going to be very difficult for them. So I want them to be supported, and I also want support for, you know, that prevention of what ICE is doing right now.
Chris, thank you for your comments.
Okay.
That concludes public comment. We're going to move to the consent agenda. And I just want to note that the additional waiver for the additional citation has been added, as well as the citation. So it... The following items were chosen because they were considered to be routine. Once I read the motion, please tell... Raise your hand as a councillor if you would like an item removed from the consent agenda. To move the following items in the printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. 6A, waiver of Town Council rules of procedure 8.6 for agenda item 6A, Juneteenth proclamation. 6A, adoption of Juneteenth proclamation. 6A, adoption of Juneteenth Proclamation. 6B, waiver of Town Council Rules of Procedure 8.6 for Agenda Item 6B, Citation of Congratulations to the Amherst Pelham Regional High School 2025 Girls Outdoor Track and Field Team. And 6B is adoption of Citation of Congratulations to the Amherst Pelham Regional High School 2025 Girls Outdoor Track Field, Track and Field Team. 11A to C, approval of the following meeting minutes, February 24, 2025, Public Forum on Appropriations Outside the Budget Minutes, and February 24, 2026, Regular Meeting Minutes, and March 10, 2025, Regular Meeting Minutes. If there are any items anybody wants removed. Seeing none, I seek a second.
Second.
Okay, we're going to move to a vote. Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer, aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Bob, Pam Rooney.
Here.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Mr. Walker is still absent. Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Okay, 11, it's unanimous, 11 in favor, and two counselors absent. I'm sorry, did I miss you? Yes, I did. Okay. It's okay. When you say present, we'll count it as aye tonight, okay? Tonight, we'll let you get away with it. All right. With those resolutions, then, on the first one, which is Juneteenth, now therefore, we, the Amherst Town Council, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth in Amherst. And we invite the Amherst community to join us in the celebratory events that honors our history and our community. And we encourage the community to view the Amherst Civil War tablets located in the Bang Center to honor all our residents who served in the Civil War. Counselor Hanke, I'm going to ask you for the next one. Meantime, I still have to send the photo to them.
That, no, they have their own photos.
Okay.
Thank you for taking this up under the 48-hour rule. Last night, the Amherst Pelham Regional High School Girls Outdoor Track and Field Team won the MIAA Division IV State Championship by 19 and 1/2 points. So I wrote this this morning, and I appreciate taking it up because I hope that it will be read and given to the track team at the groundbreaking, which is before our next meeting. They had an undefeated season. They also won the Western Mass Large School Championship. Also, not so close on that one. So they did a fantastic job. And we will read the whole citation and recognition of the team in two weeks. But tonight, we will read the now therefore. Now therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of Amherst, do hereby recognize and congratulate the Amherst Pelham Regional High School 2025 Girls Outdoor Track and Field Team on the historic accomplishment of winning the MIAA Division IV State Outdoor Track and Field Championship, and wish each of them continued athletic and academic success. Good luck to everyone who will also compete this Friday and Saturday at the Meet of Champions, Nationals next in two weeks, and the heptathlon in a week.
Great. Quite an honor for Amherst and a real wonderful award for our young women. Thank you so much. All right, we have no presentations tonight. We're going to move on to action items. We will have a specific public comment period with regard to water and sewer rates at our next meeting on the 16th, as required by the Charter. Meantime, Paul, is there anything particularly you wanted to say about water and sewer rates? Oh, thank you. Alicia, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. Is that why you had your hand raised? Yes, okay, thank you. Okay. Paul.
Thanks, Lynn. So Superintendent Public Works Guilford Mauringe and Comptroller Holly Drake and Treasurer General Fountain are also here. We really don't have a lot to present to you. You've had this memo for a while now. And if you have questions before it goes to the next reading, we're happy to address them.
Okay. Finance Committee, Kathy Shane.
Yes, you have the Finance Committee report in your packet. The highlight, of course, is the size of the rate increase this year, which is over 22% in water and over 18% in sewer. Having heard the background, both in the memo originally sent to the council and then during our meetings with DPW, we all agree these are necessary. They're covering rising staff costs, including health insurance and basic investment in infrastructure. Indeed, what we heard about the sewer plant in particular is that we're worried that the worst is yet to come because the system is aging. Parts are starting to be obsolete, so they can't be repaired. And we're talking about multimillion dollars. I don't want to go into the details in this report, but as you'll see, it laid out, both in our discussions and in the town managers, the type of work that the Water Fund, Enterprise Fund crew is doing in terms of rehabbing and putting in new lines. And there's a large debt increase for the Centennial Treatment Plant. Similarly, when you look at the sewer treatment plant, we have a sludge removal problem in Amherst, and that's driving up costs both the coming year and the year after that. And old sewer lines are needing to be relined, as well as the treatment plant. So we unanimously recommend that the council approve the requested rates and the accompanying changes in regulations which incorporate the new rates. And I'll end there because the details are in our report.
I want to note that Superintendent Guilford Mauringe has joined us. If there are any questions from the council, that this is the time. We will not vote until two weeks from now. Are there any questions? Pam Rooney.
Thank you. I do support the increase, but I had a couple of questions. Understanding that this funding is going toward generally improvements in the infrastructure across the board, there were a couple of elements that were pointed out to us. The very recent sinkhole at Green Leaves. You know, these are the kinds of things that you, unfortunately, we see in the paper. We were notified, but the community sees it in the paper. And also previously, sinkhole on Snell Street, which is a collapse of the old sewer lines. So in our fee upgrade or fee increase, is there a plan moving forward for the replacement of our extensive sewer lines in town?
Yes. Guilford, would you like to address them?
Yes, I can do that. I just, okay, yes. So we, actually, last year, we advertised what we call a slip lining bid. It's a contractor who can put a pipe inside a pipe so you don't have to completely take the pipe out again and put a new one in. We started that last year. We did slip lining on several streets. We had, it's a multi-year contract. We plan to do that this year, next year. We're actually going to go to Green Leaves and do the lines in Green Leaves next. We dropped the ones we're supposed to do. We'll shift the ones we're supposed to do this year back a year to get Green Leaves done. So we do have a plan. We do look at them. We do kind of classify them. We move them around as we need to, to get the more serious ones or the ones that show themselves before we are ready for them. One of the bigger issues in town is the siphon on Seeley Street, which is, goes from downtown under the Fearing Brook out of Spring Street, and then goes down to the South Amherst and gets pumped back around. That has had a lot of issues with backups because of grease. So we're actually designing a replacement for that line so it doesn't go through a siphon. So it's actually a gravity fed all the way across. The siphon kind of builds up grease. And we're having a lot of issues with grease at the moment with, throughout the entire town. But that's another issue. But yes, we do have a plan. It's a small plan. We're moving forward with it. And we'll just keep adding to it as money comes available.
Okay. Pam, did you have any additional questions? Are there other counselors with questions? Guilford, thank you for joining us. And Kathy, you have a question?
I don't have a question. I just want to make a comment for all the counselors, but also for the public. Last year, we were given a tour of the sewage treatment plant. That was a real eye-opener. So I don't know whether you want to do public tours through there, but if you want to see aging infrastructure in action, you will see it when you go on that tour. On some of the lower rates that we've had, both water and sewer in the past, reflect that we haven't been making major adjustments as we went along. Our rates are still within the range of other towns and cities, you know, as we're catching up on infrastructure.
Holly, did you have anything to add? And thank you for joining us, Holly.
Hi. No, did I put my hand up? No, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for joining us. Are there any other questions or comments from counselors? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. The four-town fiscal stability sustainability, actually is how it should read, Task Force Update and Appointment of Town Council Representatives. This is something that I've personally been very involved with, along with Counselor and Vice and Chair of Finance Kathy Shane. We have been meeting with the heads of the Select Boards of the three other towns that are part of the regional school committee. And in the process, approached the Superintendent of Schools. All of this was in various presidents' reports as well. The Superintendent of Schools has then indicated that she would convene a meeting. And my present understanding is that that meeting is still to be scheduled, but may or may not be on June 18th, and may or may not be at 5:00 to 7:00. The plan is to have a facilitator for that meeting. The way that it has been described in various documents that have actually not been officially communicated is that each town would have five representatives. Okay? So in addition to the update and any questions you may have about this, to the extent I can answer them, I think it would be prudent for us tonight to select or indicate who should be the five representatives for the Town of Amherst. And I'll talk about that in a moment. The other thing I want to make sure is that while anybody will be able to be at the meeting, because it will have to be a public meeting because it will include all of the school committee members, we want to make sure that if you have specific issues or questions that you would either like the town to address for ourselves or the schools to address in looking at this very critical question of what is our ability to support the regional schools and our regular schools going forward for the next several years. I want you to make sure you send those to me. So let's pause for a moment and ask, are there any questions? Pam.
You said there are five representatives from the Town of Amherst, but it wasn't clear that the entire school board will also participate?
It is my understanding, at least on any drafts that I've seen, are that the entire school committees of both Amherst, Pelham, and the region will participate.
So do they count for the five reps?
No. No. Jennifer.
Just following on that, and how many reps would be from the other towns?
Each of them also gets five. They're trying to create some level of equity. Bob Hegner.
I assume the focus of this is the regional school budget?
The focus of this is the regional schools. But the real question is to the four towns, us included, that support the regional schools is what is our collectively capacity to support the regional schools in the future? Not that we don't want to, not that we won't, but at what level? Okay? Kathy.
Lynn, you might have mentioned this, but I just want to emphasize that the superintendent is arranging to have a facilitator there so that we can keep this conversation flowing, where we're hoping we come with questions that additional information would be informing us. So the facilitator, I think Counselor Ette had at one point said with very large groups, it would be good to have a facilitator. So there's been an agreement that that is, in fact, a very good idea. And it was endorsed, as I understand it, by the Regional School Committee.
It was. And they're trying to find a facilitator through the Regional School Association, where a group that they themselves have had experienced doing exactly this kind of conversation. Andy.
I just said I have a couple of things that I just wanted to both ask and one comment. On the ask is how the agenda is being developed and whether the towns and our concerns about cheaping balanced budgets and projections into future years, how that fits in with the agenda, if the agenda is not going to be something that towns have a significant role in. So anything that you know about the agenda process, I think would be very helpful to hear. The other thing is just to comment, and that is that I think that it's, in the end, for this meeting, it probably is appropriate to try and make sure we hear from all towns. And therefore, I'm not going to challenge the question of the balance. But I do want to point out that under the constitutional provisions of one person, one vote, we do have to recognize that the city known as the Town of Amherst is substantially larger than all of the other communities combined. And that is a constitutional provision. I think that there is a question of how that works with the idea of balance. And I think the, also the question of ability to, you know, how much money is being contributed by each of the communities in the whole is something that needs to be considered. And as the agenda is being developed, I think that those are things that at least should be considered for inclusion. Whether they are or not is a decision that will be made in whatever process you're talking about and answered to the first question I give. But those are my two thoughts about this.
Okay. Let me just say that the superintendent has been very open in her communications with me. I've been able, I've talked to her twice last week, once actually in person. And she, at that point, was talking about just trying to make sure we get the date set. So I feel perfectly comfortable raising with her what the agenda will include so that it includes what we, if you will, in this case, the four towns, the elected officials or the heads of the Select Boards, and myself and Kathy have been talking about. With regard to down the road, if there are any changes to the regional agreement, that obviously has to come to each individual town. It's not the vote of a body. Just like the budget is not the vote of a body except for the towns. And the vote of the regional agreement is also that. So I, I think this is a way of trying to have a conversation. It's a way of trying to communicate and create greater understanding. But the body itself cannot be the decision-making body. Counselor Hanke?
You said earlier that all of the regional school committee, all of Pelham's school committee and all of Amherst's school committee would be invited to this meeting. I recognize that the regional school, school committee includes all of Amhersts anyway, but it does not include all of Pelham's. But that the focus of the meeting would be the region. So I guess I don't quite understand why just two of the four full local school committees would be at this meeting if the focus is the region. Or why Pelham would be invited in full, but not Chutesbury and Leverett as school committees. And I really would like to see an agenda that is focused on one of the, one of the districts, not all three of the districts. Because otherwise, you know, it's, you can't cover it all in one meeting. And there's people there that aren't necessary for a meeting about Pelham's sustainability. You know, we don't need to be there for that. And so I, I would urge you when speaking to the superintendent to be clear that which body and which district is this for? And that's the school committee that needs to be there.
Thank you. I think those are both excellent points. Initially, there was even the idea that the elementary school committees of the two other towns would also be there. I, the latest documents I've seen have not included them. Pelham itself is a very small school committee. I understand they've recently had some changes. And I think it really is up to them how much they feel. This is really a regional conversation. It's not a conversation. We, we have to have our own separate conversation about the elementary schools, but this is a regional conversation.
Can I add? I would support a similar meeting for us in the
Yes.
Amherst School Committee too.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. And that was originally in the, an initial outline, which you all saw. Right now, we're just trying to get this one firmed up. Counselor Ette?
I wanted to know what kind of votes would be made by this body. This is in response to what Andy had said. Clearly, the committee is not making any decisions on behalf of the town, so even for the region. But what are the kind of decisions that the body would be interested in making beyond having a conversation?
That this body is not a decision-making body. It's an information-seeking body, and it may be a recommending body in terms of, for instance, changes to the regional agreement. But they can't vote. They can't make those decisions. Only the member towns can make those decisions. And we have, so, and the regional agreement is very clear about that. So it can make recommendations, but more importantly, it's the idea that let's have a conversation. Let's gather some facts and figures and have a complete understanding of our financial picture across all four municipalities as it relates to the regional schools, which means frankly, the municipalities have to have a full understanding of their own financial needs, just like we always do. Does that help?
Yes. So in a practical sense, it doesn't matter that there is equality across the different towns?
Right.
Okay.
So on your agenda, on your motions, is a motion to appoint for, for town counselors. The reason I put on four is because the town manager clearly needs to be one of the people. If we had a finance director, they might also be one of the people. But we don't have a finance director at this point. So for the time being, what I would like to suggest is that the motion include the following lineup, if you will, and it's really by position, if you will. So the president of the council, the vice president of the council, the chair of finance, and the person on finance who has spent the most time in this last year developing and seeking questions about the schools. And that is actually Counselor Hanke. So unless there are other thoughts regarding that, I will be prepared to make a motion, but let's hear other thoughts. Okay, then in that case, I'll make a motion to appoint the following counselors as council representatives to the four town fiscal, it should say sustainability task force, and to authorize those councils, counselors to speak on behalf of the council, obviously not make commitments. President Lynn Griesmer, Vice President George Ryan, Chair of Finance Committee Kathy Shane, and at-large Counselor Mandy Jo Hanke. Is there a second?
Shane, Shane seconds.
Okay. Pam Rooney?
Thank you. I probably should have spoken before. I was thinking the vice president was Anna Devlin-Gothier, who in fact initiated some of this activity. And if, if the current vice president didn't want to take on this role, I would strongly support Anna Devlin-Gothier as the fourth person on this team.
Right. Of, thank you. At this point, let's leave the motion where it is, and we may have to substitute at some point during there. The superintendent could come back to us and say, we want six people. I have no idea. What I don't want to do is be sitting here and have the 18th arrive, and we haven't discussed this, and we haven't set everything up. So that's, that was my rationale. Okay? Jennifer?
Yeah, I, I think how Sir Rooney, that was a, a good suggestion. I mean, it's no disrespect to any of the people that you recommended, but I think that, you know, Anna brings a perspective that would be helpful in the conversation. I think it would be good to have some diversity of perspective.
And I certainly want her to bring her perspective through questioning and any other comments?
Well, why couldn't she be?
You can, you can make a motion to amend if you want.
I, I would like to. It feels a little awkward because she's not here.
You're welcome to make a motion to amend.
Yeah. I mean, I would, I'm torn because she's not here, and I don't know if she's available on the 18th. But if she, I, I would, with all due respect to the vice president of the council, it is nothing personal, but I don't know that that position needs to be represented. So I would move to amend that Counselor Devlin-Gothier be one of the five.
Okay. A motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Second.
Point of clarification. There's four names right now, and the motion to amend, if I heard it, was to just add a fifth?
No, it was to substitute for the vice president, the name.
That's what I wanted clarified. So it's a motion to amend to delete Vice President Ryan and add Anna Devlin-Gothier. Okay.
That is the motion, yes. Pat DeAngelis?
I have incredible respect for Counselor Devlin-Gothier. However, I cannot support her in this position. I've seen a a general bias towards the schools that has impacted roads and sidewalk budgets. And I feel like I would like to have someone who has the ability to really look clearly and separately at the issue and not be already have decisions made in, in, so I cannot support her candidacy.
Jennifer or Pam, would you like to speak to your motion? Jennifer?
Pam, certainly speak too. I, I'm really don't, I would like to avoid a situation where I'm hitting one counselor against the other because that's, but I think that if we're going to go by whether you're for roads or sidewalks or the school, then both counselors, Ryan and Devon Gothier have, have voted and have a position. I think that yes, Counselor Devon, Devon Gothier was in the minority on that particular vote, but I think that it's important to have a diversity of perspectives. And I think she brings a perspective that is different than, I would say, the other four representatives that we're voting on for this committee. I think her voice should be heard. I think it represents, and I'm not even, you know, saying whether I agree, you know, I, I share ones more than the other, but I think that many people in the community that she gives voice to them. And I think that she's really put herself out there on this issue. And that we would be well-served by having the chair of the finance committee, the president of the council, the town manager, Counselor at Large Hanke, and Counselor Devon Gothier. I think that would be a well-rounded representation of the council and, and the town as well.
Thank you. Kathy?
I, I guess I will, I think stepping back from all of this is really important and being very analytic. What I'm hoping is the four towns will come up with questions that will challenge the schools to provide answers in an information sense, really looking at what's going on, comparative information and, and benchmarking. And I'm struck by who did or did not participate when we were asking these questions for two hours of the schools in the budget review. And who was there and who participated? Anna wasn't there, you know, and I, I just think this bigger perspective on the towns, each of the four towns' ability to support all of our systems, schools as well as everything else, is a really important perspective.
I'm going to go to Counselor Ette.
I think this escalated beyond where it needed to get to. What we are looking for are members of the council who will represent the council, which means that for those who are not part of the five, they can bring questions. So we don't need everyone to be there or pit one side against the other. For this particular motion, I'll abstain because I think what has happened is it's ended up being one side against the other. But frankly, there isn't a side as much as the perspectives that the town can bring to the body.
Pam Rooney?
Yeah, I want to be clear. I was not trying to pit anyone. It just struck me that because Anna had brought this thoughtful, very parallel motion to the floor in an effort to nudge us off base and make us think, think a little differently about how we were approaching the school budget. I appreciated that. I didn't necessarily agree with every, every one of the elements, but it was a, it was an effort to think more broadly. So it just struck me that it was odd that she wasn't one of the people that was listed. That's all. You know, Mr. Ryan's wonderful. It, it doesn't really matter, but it just struck me.
Okay. Counselor Ette, did you have your hand up? All right, the, their motion.
My hand was.
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Um, I, I'm affecting it towards both Counselor Ryan and Counselor Devon Gothier. So this is in my mind, not so much about pitting one against the order, but frankly, finding the best way to get perspectives from the council to the body. Even if the intent wasn't to, to make that kind of move, that's what this vote will turn out to be. And so, as I said, I intend to abstain, but I would also encourage the motion to be withdrawn if it can. Thank you.
Okay. Alicia?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Counselor Walker. I, I misaddressed you. Counselor Walker?
Thank you. I just wanted to add my voices conversation a little bit because, you know, I, I do hear where Counselor Ette is coming from. I think anybody on the council, any counselor would represent the council well on this body. But I too would support Counselor Devlin-Gothier because of the, the parallel group that she worked to propose. And it seems like she has already spent a great deal of time meeting with members of the school committee and to really flesh out this kind of idea. So it does seem appropriate. It is also this really awkward position because she is not here, and so I don't know if she has any interest in doing this. And also just wanted to explicitly state that I would also have no issue with any composition of counselors being on this committee or this body. But I also do think Anna holds a special perspective because she was a student in the schools, and I think that that's significant.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? So again, in this case, we're going to move to the vote for the amendment. The amendment would mean that the four counselors are President Lynn Griesmer, Anna Devlin-Gothier, Kathy Shane, and Counselor Hanke. Okay, that, that's the amendment. Right? So let's begin with the amendment. I'm going to go with Counselor Ette?
Abstain.
Counsel, Lynn Griesmer is a nay. Counselor Hanke?
No.
Bob Hegner?
No.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
No.
Kathy Shane?
No.
Andy Steinberg?
No.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
No.
Counselor Ette, we already got there. Okay. So it is four in favor, two, three, four, five, seven opposed, and one abstention. The motion, the motion to amend fails. We're back to the original motion. The original motion is for the president of the council, but the vice president of the council, the chair of finance, and Counselor Hanke as the person who is focused on schools. We'll begin with, are there any other comments? Okay, we'll begin with the vote. In this case, I believe it's myself, and I'm an aye. Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
Nay.
Pam Rooney?
Aye.
George Ryan? Counselor Ryan, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Taub?
Abstain.
Counselor Walker?
No.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier is absent. Counselor Ette?
Aye.
The motion passes with six, seven, eight, nine in favor, two opposed, and one abstention. Okay. Thank you. We're done with that unless there's further questions. We're on the area issue of appointments. We actually are now going to ask Counselor Ette, who is vice chair of GOL, to talk about the list of liaisons that GOL is putting forward, see whether or not we want to stick to that list, and then later on, we have to see whether or not. Oh, it was a pop of a can. I'm trying to figure out what was so funny. Okay. Please hold off till later if you don't mind. So Counselor Ette, would you please talk about the GOL process? And then we'll move to see who wants to volunteer for which committees. Okay?
So GOL looked over the various town committees that we have. And the fact is, there are more committees than we have counselors. And so it was to find both those committees that are willing to have liaisons and possibly those committees that the council believes a liaison would be. a liaison would be important to have. And from that list, we came up with 10 committees, of which nine already had liaisons from last year, the sole exception being Recreation. And with a 4-0 vote, I think we selected these committees as ones that we would recommend to have liaisons in 2025.
So the list is on the screen, and we also want to make sure that there's all the ongoing understanding of what a liaison is, in fact, that they're not a voting member of the committee. So, list is Commission for Persons with Disabilities, Transportation Advisory. Please note, some of this could change depending on where we go with the Transportation and Parking Commission, Amherst Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Board of Trustees, Board of Health, CPA, CSSJC, Council on Aging, ECAC, Human Rights, and Recreation. So rather than go through a laborious process, let's just start with, is there anybody who would like to volunteer for the Commission for Persons with Disabilities? Pat DeAngelis, going once, going twice, sold. Transportation Advisory.
I'd actually like to make a comment, if I may.
Please.
That I'm not volunteering for this body. I think you'd probably be wise simply to remove it from the list and go on.
Okay, is there any objection to removing it from the list? Okay. Amherst Affordable Housing Trust.
My hand is still up, and I would be happy to serve as liaison for that body.
Going once, going twice. Board of Health. I'm going to pass over it and come back. CPA. Pass over it and come back. CSSJC. Ah, Counselor Lord, yes?
Yes, I would love to continue to serve as liaison for this group.
Thank you. Council on Aging. Jennifer Taub. ECAC. I don't know.
Counselor Ette?
Uh-huh. I think it's, who is the present one?
Counselor Ette.
It is. Oh, are you volunteering? Excellent.
Yes.
Again, yes, I am.
Excellent. Human Rights Commission? I actually will take that if no one else wants it. Recreation Commission.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Was there a specific reason that GOL recommended adding liaisons for this one?
Let's test your memory.
I believe Pat DeAngelis recommended it.
I think she did.
Yes.
So Pat, you're on the spot.
I had previously, I think a year or two ago, been the liaison to the Recreation Commission, but it really didn't seem very necessary.
So are we going to leave it on or not?
I think we can take it off, unless there's, you know, specifically asking, but I can't.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Somebody wants it.
So we still have Board of Health and CPAC. Volunteer.
Lynn, do you know when the Board of Health meets?
Jennifer? Oh, you weren't Board of Health. You were Counsel on Aging. Okay. I don't know. Paul, do you know when Board of Health meets?
I think it's Thursday, like at 5:00 or something. We can check on it.
That's when, that's CRC time, yeah. Yeah. All right, Pat, I'm putting you down. And CPAC.
All right, I wasn't raising my hand to volunteer, but for half a year, I was the liaison, and it's a really interesting committee. I enjoyed listening in, but I don't, there wasn't, they report back to the Council.
They do.
Yes, so I don't know that somebody has to be there and report back, kind of before they report back.
Okay. So with, we'd like to strike that one. Okay. So I would like to then make the following motion, to appoint the following counselors as liaisons to the corresponding multiple-member bodies. Counselor Pat DeAngelis to the Commission for Persons with Disabilities. Counselor Ryan to Amherst Affordable Housing Trust. Pat DeAngelis to the Board of Health. Counselor Lord to Community Safety and Social Justice Committee. Jennifer Taub to the Council on Aging. Counselor Ette to Energy and Climate Action Committee. Lynn Griesmer to Human Rights Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Aye.
Okay. And Athena, did you get all that? I think I have it down too, but, okay. Any other questions or comments? Paul Bachmann?
So the Board of Health does meet at 5:00 o'clock on Thursdays?
Thank you.
On, the Board of Health meets on, at 5:00 o'clock on Thursday, the first Thursday of the month.
I also just want to mention, you don't have to go to the meeting, but just be available. You know that very well, Pat, from my time. Okay. Then in that case, we're going to move to the vote. Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye, it's unanimous. We are actually going to now go to committee reports. Hold on, let me find my notes. Community Resources Committee, CRC. Pam Rooney? I skipped Budget Coordinating because we haven't met. Go ahead.
Let's skip ahead. Community Resources Committee has been focusing on the Solar Bylaw, and we are prepared for interviews on June 12 during our regular meeting session.
For the Planning Board.
Planning Board.
And can I ask a question? How about ZBA?
We do not have a sufficient pool voted yet.
Okay. At some point, I believe the practice has been to either ask people to extend, okay? Until said somebody is appointed.
Yes. If we, if we do not, so at the, at the, in our meeting on the 12th, one of the agenda items is to discuss sufficiency of the pool of candidates for the ZBA. We will vote at that time. If we proceed with that, we will be in good order on the 26th to interview ZBA candidates. If we do not proceed with that, we will, I will draft the memo for the, the motion for the Council to extend the terms of the existing people so that they aren't coming up short.
It's also most courteous to check with them to make sure.
Yes, of course. Yes, of course.
I got caught in that one time.
Yeah. Thank you.
Counselor Ryan?
So for the Planning Board interviews on the 12th, the statements of interest will be posted.
Correct.
We don't get those directly, so we need to keep an eye on, or do we get them directly?
They will be posted in the meeting for
For the interview?
For the CRC, for the 12th.
So CRC meeting will have the SOIs. Thank you.
Are there any other questions on that committee?
And those statements of interest are due tonight.
And they're all in.
Excellent. That's a good sign. Elementary School Building Committee, Kathy?
We haven't met since the last time I reported. Our next meeting is June 20th.
Okay. Finance Committee, Kathy?
The, oh, I didn't hear Finance Committee.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee meets tomorrow at 2:00. As you said, we are at the final stage of the Finance Committee's report to the Council regarding the budget. We, we have a draft, and we're putting, we'll be putting a period on it tomorrow.
Great. Thank you. GOL, Counselor Ette?
So GOL looked at the water and seawater rates and found the motion to be clear, consistent, and actionable. Afterwards, we looked at the ABLC charge. We went through some of the questions and suggestions that were made by counselors, but decided not to extend to the end and have a vote because there were only three counselors that were present by the end of the meeting. GOL also continued discussion on the Town Manager evaluations. We've been looking at some of the perspectives from other towns and going over the entire process again. That wasn't complete. So going forward, the Chair said she'll be speaking with the Town Manager and Athena, and also requests that counselors still send their edits and suggestions on the Council rule of procedure.
And we have not declared the pool sufficient for either Finance or the Charter Review Committee. Jones Library, Pam?
Thank you. Jones Library Committee has not met recently, but I am actually rething, hoping that we can have periodic and very regular meetings similar to the School Board Committee, Building Committee, where we get updated on what is the status of, of the owner's project manager? What is the status on meeting with the neighbors so that the neighbors understand the construction process? We all, we all were notified that the groundbreaking is on the 18th, but the neighbors need to have a conversation before that happens so that they aren't hearing schedules for the first time at that groundbreaking. I think, you know, we also, we also need, as a, as a building committee, need to understand what change orders are coming. We know that there are several that are being negotiated. The building committee doesn't seem to be part of them. So that's just my public request to have more consistent updates.
Thank you. TSO, Andy?
There are hands up, Lynn?
I'm sorry. Yes. George, you have your hand up, but I don't think you meant to. Kathy?
Do have my hand up. Pam, just to add to your list, we see invoices every month, and they're detailed invoices with how much we expected to pay and how much have we paid so far. So it's been very useful as a way, really, of tracking the project.
Thank you, Kathy. Andy, TSO?
As I noted earlier, TSO is meeting this week on Thursday at 10:00 a.m. And just as a reminder, that this is the meeting where we want to finally get to a conclusion on a recommendation regarding the Transportation and Parking Commission. And we had circulated all of our report and our, the two major things that need to be amended and what the, or developed, one was, the amendment was to the Town Council policy in public ways, and the new item was the the committee charge. For a second, it was, and I've received some excellent comments from one person on the Council, but I had not heard from anyone else. Really would appreciate if you have questions or comments, and you're not on the committee, to please submit them while we ask for them by today. It's, you know, really up, not too late up until Thursday when we meet, because we really would like to be able to address concerns or questions, not that they're going to be resolved necessarily to satisfaction, but it will help facilitate the answers that we make available. And so if you do have questions or comments or concerns, it would really be appreciated by the committee to hear them. And the, I think that that's basically what the agenda is. We will have a little, one other item on, for Thursday, that is just the process to make a recommendation regarding continuation with the design of Heatherstone as it has been built, which has been a subject of some discussion over the years, and the thought was that we should make a review of it and submit our review to the Council. So that's, of course, a public way issue that's still within the purview of the, of the Council. So I think that those are the basic items that we had on Thursday, but I do, just wanted to urge you, if you have thoughts or comments or questions about Transportation and Parking Commission as it has developed and we had presented it to the, to you in memos at the last council meeting, we really would appreciate hearing from you. Thank you.
Kathy?
If, I, I completely forgot, I must admit. So I'm wondering if I get them to you by Wednesday into the day? Can it go in, in some form? I'll get them, I will promise if I have them, they'll be well organized, or I'll try to make them well organized.
Well, thank you. And that's, for anyone, and I will get to the committee since I did see somebody on the committee raise a question, the one that I received. But I know that there are a number of people we had asked for comments from the current TAC, and the Chair was going to, our comments, TAC is not chosen to meet in order to develop comments themselves, so I'm still hoping that I'll hear from the Chair before the, before meeting Thursday.
Thank you. Are there any liaison reports? Yes.
I don't have a liaison report, but just to note that the agenda will need updated to reflect the current liaisons, given
Thank you.
There's lists on here that is outdated.
Is no longer correct. It will be for the next meeting. Thank you. Approval of minutes? We approved them, however, I want to draw attention to the memo from the Clerk of the Town Council on the status of outstanding meeting minutes and ask if you'd like to make any comments or just seek questions. This was a specific request with regard to last meeting's minute, meeting. Counselor Ryan?
So again, appreciative of the work that the Council Clerk has done and the many people who work for her and with her. In the memo that was sent, it was suggested, just suggested that the Council might want to rethink what it expects out of minutes, and that might have a positive or potentially helpful impact on staff time and energy. And I, my question is about where, where would that go if we wanted to have that discussion? And my question is about where would that go if we wanted to have that discussion? Would it go to GOL? Would it be something the council would discuss? You know, in my own mind, it's not really clear what, in fact, I do expect for minutes. So I think I could benefit from that discussion wherever it takes place. So I just wondered about that.
It does seem to me it would be a GOL discussion. But let's see. Councilor Hanke, go ahead.
So I was going to speak on the same topic. I would endorse simplifying the minutes for our staff. I think there's some requirements in the charter about the minutes. But beyond that, I think most of those requirements and expectations come through with our rules of procedure. So that would just require a redraft of that section? Is that the only section, sort of the only thing we would have to redraft? Is that sort of how these minutes are being drafted would be one question. And number two, does GOL, they're coming up with a rules review, but they expected to have written proposals? Would this be one that they would be willing to take up on their own, or would they need a written proposal from a counselor? And I guess my question would be, it would be good to know if the council's in somewhat favor of redoing this before a counselor puts in the work to rewrite.
Lynn?
Yeah.
In the past, GOL has accepted proposals from me, the clerk, the council clerk. So I would be willing to draft something as a rule change.
I think personally, I'm going to say that would be very welcome. Councilor Hanke, did you have a comment on that?
I would just say that would be fantastic because you would be the much better person to redraft that section than someone like me.
Andy Steinberg?
Yeah, I just, in addition, we, of course, have the open meeting law. Clerk is well aware, because she's our advisor on the open meeting law. But the open meeting law does specify the minimum of what has to be in minutes of public meetings. My other observation is that when we developed the original plan for what we look for in minutes, it was before we started meeting all on Zoom and had real-time recordings of every committee meeting. And so the people who are interested in a committee meeting and the discussion can get the discussion by asking for the recordings. And as indicated in the clerk's memo, they are provided generally within 24 hours. So as GOL considers whatever proposal comes forward, I think it's really worth taking a step back and recognizing that things have changed and to make sure that we're coming up with the most efficient process given the number of committee meetings and the burden of trying to monitor that number of minutes and trying to simplify to the greatest extent possible consistent with the open meeting law.
Yeah. So are there any other questions or comments? I just want to say, Athena, I think this is terrific that we're looking back to you and saying, you're the expert on this. Go for it.
I appreciate the feedback from the council that we can simplify because they've been very, very detailed for a long time, and that will make the job easier. So I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. And thank you for the very thorough memo and explanation, having been one of the people who asked about the use of AI. I specifically appreciate your addressing that. I think I was placing more faith in AI than is deserved. Okay. Town manager's report. There's a written report. Paul?
Yeah, there is a detailed written report if I can answer any questions on that. Next week, there are a number of housing information sessions and opportunities to weigh in on things with ADUs, the Southhamer school site, and the Cup of Joe with Greg, who is our housing planner. The week after that is sort of our ceremonial groundbreaking, which is for the track and field on Monday and the Jones Library on Wednesday. We are getting our team ready to go, getting the OPM on board, getting the architects ready to move forward, and the contractor. So we're not paying anybody at this point in time, but we will be in a very, very near future. And then just, you also know that, so that's, this is her last week as town clerk, as the president said. And there is a farewell gathering in this room for her on Wednesday at 3:00. You're all welcome to attend.
Other questions for the town manager? Bob Hegner?
I don't have a question. I just want to commend the town manager for, and our finance staff, et cetera, for the town maintaining its credit rating,
Yes.
which I think is very important for the finances of the town. And also, I don't know if the town manager made it made as big a deal as I think it is, which is Amherst being designated as a climate leader community. Not only is it one of, we are one of five, I think, in the state. And certainly the first, within the first group that received this designation. It also makes us eligible for grants of $150,000 for technical assistance and then grants of up to $1 million for implementation of projects. So I think there's dollars behind this designation that we wouldn't otherwise have access to. So thank you.
Yeah. Well, yeah. So I think, thanks go to Stephanie Chicarella, who was our sustainability director, who really directed it. But also, the schools have supported it. There were some things that the school superintendent had to do in order for us to qualify, and she was more than willing to help us establish the policies for the school district because they're an important user of electricity as well.
Great. Thank you. Kathy?
Not that I want to extend your already very impressive to-do lists and reports, but I think you're still meeting regularly with UMass leadership or somewhat regularly. But I wonder if you could bring up with them? I saw with our track and field team, whatever the condition of our track has been, track and field will be under construction for a while. And I saw in a superintendent discussion with the regional that UMass wants to charge us, would charge us $200 an hour versus free at Amherst. And so I wonder if we could reopen that discussion to say this would be a wonderful community benefit, an in-kind benefit to give back to Amherst. And I realize that we can't be on their fields at the point they're on their fields or there's a meeting. There was some worry about NCAA and a couple other rules, but I think there may be ways around it if the university really puts their mind to it, not other than charging it. Because at that cost, the notes said we might go as far as North Hampton. And that just seems we've got fields in Amherst. It would be good to try to use them. Hampshire also offered at $80 an hour, but their fields are not big enough to do the kind of training we want to do on them, at least as reported back. So Amherst is a really good source, as long as they're not using them because they have more than adequate fields, and it's a generous offer.
So, yeah, so we have explored all those options, obviously. And they're very, because they're nearby and they make it readily accessible. The challenge we have is that when we want to use the track and the fields is when the colleges and universities want to use the track and the field. The university has lots of tracks, lots of fields. But they are bound by NCAA rules, and I don't think we can get around that. They endanger their ability to compete for NCAA tournaments if they give preferential treatment to any kind of program like ours because it's considered recruiting and they're not allowed to do that. So it's an odd rule. They have to treat everybody the same and not give preferential treatment to one community.
And we did raise this at our last meeting, and George and I heard that same issue, which it is what it is.
Can I just, I'll ask an odd follow-up. But a person asked me this. If a donation was made to the university to defray the charge and buy a certain number of hours, I'm assuming since they gave us a rate, they could accept that. So might go the alternative route. I mean, they did give us a dollar so much per hour. So they weren't saying we could never use them. They had to charge for it.
Yeah. I don't think that a private donation to the university, but if you donate it to the town and then the town purchased the, the relationship is between student, athletes, and the university. And so if we are paying for it and anybody, any other school could also pay for it, that'd be fine. So we would welcome any kind of donations at any time for that kind of activity. Yeah.
Yeah. Jennifer?
Yes, this actually came in, this idea came in an email to the whole council a few weeks ago. But along the lines when Pam had made the request for updates on the library building committee, the resident had asked if on some regular basis, we could also get a fundraising update from the capital campaign. So maybe like once a month, that could be part of town manager's report?
So that's a private entity, but we can certainly request that from the private entity raising the funds.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments to the town manager? Okay. Yes, Councilor Ette?
As we can tell from the comments that we made during public comments, there's a lot of apprehension about ICE's activities in town. I just wanted to know what the town manager has to say beyond what has been read in the papers. Because one of the things, the reason I ask this is, one of the things that happens is there's a lot of misinformation that ends up happening and possible hysteria for events in the future. And so is there any further light that the town manager could shed on what has transpired already?
So the events last week were very real and scary and horrible for the residents of our town. You know, you look at the invent, the incident in Milford, where they pulled a student on his way to volleyball practice who was going to play in the band at graduation the next week. Because he was driving his father's car, they were looking for the father. They arrested him and took, put him in detention instead. They did not have him in their eyesight. And their explanation was, well, we have to do it this way because you're not cooperating with us, which is ridiculous. So we found out about the incidents by happenstance. They did not inform, ICE did not inform the town in advance. We happened to have a police officer traveling by where the person who was picked up was pulled over, and they stopped to inquire what was going on. The other incident was noticed by security, the way I understand it, by security cameras on a parking lot. And someone said, hey, is that you arresting somebody? We did not know anything about it. It was not from ICE who communicated to us. So I think the message is that ICE is active in our town. These are the two incidents that we are well aware of. I'm sure there are other incidents. You know, they say they provide advance notice. They don't always. And, you know, there's not a whole lot that we can do. We've talked with, I talked with the governor on Saturday about this, in fact. We talked with our senator, our state rep. Congressman McGovern's office has been very helpful. They got good information for us. So, you know, and our police officers are understanding what they can and what they can't do. We're fairly limited in what our officers or any of us can do. I think in many ways, private citizens have more leeway in the kind of activity they can do in terms of filming or whatever kind of passive resistance they want to do, which is what you're seeing in other communities. So, but it happens very quickly. You know, the Somerville incident was a matter of minutes in and out. And it's a terrifying event. When we heard about it in our community, it just sent shivers to everyone who worked for the town. And it was just not the kind of country that we think we live in right now.
Councilor Hanke?
You also sent us a notice regarding the executive order and the subsequent list that was published that alleged that we would be getting a letter or stated we would be getting a letter that would claim we're violating some sort of federal law. Do you have any, have we gotten the letter? And do you have any idea what federal laws they would claim sanctuary cities are violating?
I don't know. The list of communities they posted was sort of random, with some cities that were specifically anti-sanctuary communities. We have not received the letter. We don't know what it is. Our town attorney was on it. You know, as soon as that was announced, they were reaching out, saying, as soon as you get it sent to us. They're in communication with other cities and towns that are sanctuary communities in Massachusetts. The attorneys from all those communities are in touch with each other. So then they're sharing information as they find out about it. So there's, you know, there's what, 10, 12 communities that are sanctuary communities? We don't know what that really means, you know. We don't know what they're saying, you know. And I don't know how much of it is based in real legal law, you know, law, as opposed to just saying things out loud that they want to see legal.
Are there any other questions or comments? And then, yes, Bob?
The conversation made me think about whether we have, there's any legal things we can do to force ICE to identify their agents. And, you know, we've got people basically walking into our, on our streets, grabbing people off the street, and we have no idea who these people are. Can't we require that they identify their agents, that they identify who they are, who's, you know, reporting? Or, you know, even if it's after the fact. But I mean, it seems to me that we have a legal requirement, or somehow it's illegal for somebody to just walk on the street and grab somebody. And so do we have any legal recourse where we can ask them to identify themselves ahead of time?
So it depends on what the situation is. For a warrant for an arrest, the way I understand it, you know, this is from a conversation with someone who should know. They do not have to produce a warrant for an arrest. If it's a search, they do have to produce a warrant. They, you know, we see these people coming in heavily armed with masks. I have the exact same response you have, but I'm told that there's nothing that we can do if someone is a federal agent and they have, say they have a warrant and they're picking up somebody. I'm not sure if they even use the word arrest, but, you know. I mean, just talking to everybody I know, it's just very little that cities and towns can do legally.
Kathy?
Paul, can we, you know, I'm, you know, I watch movies, but could we ask them, do you have a badge and do you have a name? I mean, how do we know they're a federal agent if they don't provide some official-looking something that says they are who they say they are?
So I think that's for police. They have to give you a badge and your name and badge number. I don't think it applies to federal agents.
Okay, I'll double check just from my home legal resource.
An ongoing sobering conversation. Are there any other comments or questions of the town manager? Right. So then let me, first of all, apologize for being late to the reading of the proclamation today. It was because I was having a computer glitch and I was trying to follow up to make sure that I had the latest on the status of special legislation. All the special legislation has now been filed and all of, we have received verification that all the documents that they need, they have received. Okay? That was as of Friday. Supposedly by today, we were supposed to get Supposedly by today, we were supposed to get numbers for each of the acts. I have not seen that. I did check while I was sitting here, although I'm not supposed to. And once we get the numbers, then we will know what committees and hopefully we will also know what committees they have been filed with. Other than that, what I've also been trying to do is and have just not had the time, and that's to follow up on the committees where our legislation went to last year to see what they've done with any similar legislation this year. But again, I haven't had time to figure to follow that up. Are there any other questions on that? I will continue to provide your updates as I have them. And I will continue. And I will just say that Representative Dom's office has been extremely helpful in this whole process. Okay, future agenda items. The 16th, we'll have a proclamation for the Dalai Lama's 90th birthday. We may have something from Transportation and Parking. We will have a, we will have the report from the Finance Committee and a motion to adopt the Budget and Capital Improvement Program. Also to adopt water and sewer rates with a special public comment. We may have some intergovernmental agreements and appointments from town manager and we'll see whether we have any appointments from other committees. On the 30th, basically, we will mop up whatever we don't get done on the 16th. And that's basically it. Are there any counsel, are there any questions or comments about future agenda items and also counsel comments? Just wait for counsel comments. Future agenda items. Pat? No? Okay. Counselor comments? Please.
Now I try to find words to share my thoughts with you. And antisemitism to fuel its transformation from democracy to authoritarianism and to justify its crackdown on those who challenge the lies and see as Plato did, that demigods exploit free speech to install themselves as tyrants. But my words have unraveled and have been silenced by an immobilizing anger and grief. But tonight I will speak. ICE agents, government hooligans are roaming our streets, terrifying residents, kidnapping members of our community and denying them due process. The Department of Homeland Security is threatening to revoke federal funding and find ways to punish sanctuary communities. All this is done illegally and to benefit the white supremacist billionaires usurping our rights. Antisemitism is being used as a ploy to silence American citizens and legal residents who support, as I do, an end to the Israeli government's systemic starvation and displacement of the Palestinian people and its attempt to make genocide acceptable. As Greta Thunberg recently said, every single one of us has a moral obligation to do everything we can to fight for free Palestine. And I would add to protect our neighbors regardless. Just one sec. I cut this down. We must speak out, stand out and resist authoritarianism. We must never, as Timothy Snyder has said in his book on tyranny, obey in advance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Pat. Are there any other public comments from the council? Seeing none, I make a motion to adjourn and seek a second.
Second.
Begin the vote with Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg? Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Counsel Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Greasmer's an aye. Counselor Hannick?
Aye.
It's unanimous. The meeting is adjourned. It's 8:26.